Can you email that?
To you?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our chairman is logging on right now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello.
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 Uh, thank you all so much for your patience. I am looking for my rules for public hearings. As we do have this evening.
I'm about to send it right now.
You're gonna send it? I had modified some also in. Uh, but go ahead and send me what you have. Give me just one second, okay? Okay, I will for sure use yours Anthony. I um, because I cannot put my hands on mine. But we'll go ahead and get our meeting started, okay? Thank you all so much for your patience. Um, at this time, I am calling our January twenty first two thousand twenty-one meeting to order. Happy New Year to everyone. The time is seven ten, so we're just ten minutes past our seven o'clock hour. And I'd like to ask staff to sound roll call to establish a court, please.
Commissioner Atkins.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Tucker.
Here.
Commissioner Bell. Commissioner Fan.
Here.
Commissioner McKnight.
Here.
Commissioner Lovett.
Here.
Commissioner Bryant. Commissioner Fields.
Yeah.
Mrs. Chair, you have a form.
All right, thank you so very much. Um, at this time, I'd like for everyone to please join me in a moment of silence. And if you would, please, remember those that were lost in the insurrection that occurred in our country on the sixth of January. And also remember just our very fragile democracy at this time. So if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Um, at this time, I would like to ask, Tony, could you um, please enlarge your screen? I'm using your agenda today. And these old eyes are not that great. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner McKnight, that we adopt our agenda as presented this evening. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, our agenda is adopted. Commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve our December twenty eighth special call meeting minutes.
Those minutes have yet to be submitted to you all.
Okay. All right, so then we will move on to the next agenda item, which is all business and there is none. Um, the next agenda item is new business. Um, our first case is two zero two zero U as an umbrella that has zero zero five dash one zero.
Yes, Mrs. Chair, before we do, I know that Dr. Bryant, um, there was a comment in regards him calling in. Does anyone know the last four or which number is his? So I can add him to the panelists.
Nine eight one nine.
Thank you.
And I did see Commissioner Bell earlier on the um, on the Zoom. I don't know if he's uh, I don't know if he's um, still on the call or not.
He's back and thank you so much because Commissioner Bill, you will have to say present for the record. Um, even though your name showed up, um, the court reporter will need to actually hear you say present. So we could go ahead and do that bit of housekeeping.
Yes, I am present.
All right, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Bryant, I have allowed him to speak, but it doesn't give me the chance to make him a panelist. I'm not sure that's because he's calling in.
Okay, Commissioner Bryant, can you hear us? You have us on mute. Do you have to take him off of mute, Tony?
Yeah, I allowed him to talk.
Is he nine eight one nine? Okay. His square is still showing mute.
It just locked him out.
Okay.
He logged out, um, one of the other.
There's still one more of his that is on.
He should be nine eight one nine.
She disappeared from the attendees.
The nine eight one nine number is still there. I could still see it.
Yeah, I still see it as well.
I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, it, he should be able to speak.
Commissioner Bryant? Okay, um, his, he may be speaking and he might think that, is he able to see the screen?
If he's calling in, probably not.
Okay.
Okay, I can hear him now.
I heard.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Commissioner Bryant, could you just say present so that the court reporter can record you? And we can have you a part of the official list of commissioners that are present this evening?
Present.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Let me just tell you how all things work for the good. I found my me, um, my public hearing.
Just needed a little bit of time.
That's all I needed. I promise you, I'll work it out. Um, okay, staff, could you please sound our first agenda item two zero two zero U as an umbrella dash zero zero five dash one zero with the concurrent variance of two zero two zero? V as in Victor, C as in Charles.
Yes, Chairman, uh, I.
Three dash one zero.
Sorry about that. Um, item number one, case number twenty twenty U dash zero zero five dash one zero, applicant Miriam Frago. Location seventeen oh nine Neely Avenue. The applicant requests a special use permit to convert an existing detached garage into a habitable accessory structure with a concurrent variance to re- for relief from required third unobstructed parking space. This is a special use permit.
Okay, thank you. This agenda item does require public hearing. At this time, I will, I'll sound our rules for public hearings. Public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be conducted in accordance with section ten dash two two one nine of East Point zoning code and development regulations. As we continue to meet virtually due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, we're utilizing this tele meeting platform to act upon planning and zoning cases as they come before this commission. As such, I am asking each participant other than the commissioners and staff to mute their devices. Once we get to parts of the agenda that require public input, those who have notified staff of their desire to speak will be recognized to speak. If you do not notify staff but desire to speak, please raise hand or chat function to be recognized. Public hearings rules are as follows. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address their commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a fifteen minute. By majority vote, the commission may increase the total top of speakers, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for a side, the chair or the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of the court. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify him or herself, state his or her current address, and each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning ordinance under consideration. The presiding officer may refuse to speak or the right to continue if after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of the form. Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard our rules of public hearings. At this time, um, I'd like to ask if Ms. Frago is present?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Frago, before we get to that, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case number two zero two zero. U as an umbrella dash zero zero five dash one zero with concurrent variance two zero two zero Victor Charles dash zero one three dash one zero.
Mr. Chair, I move that we open the public hearing for case number two zero two zero U zero zero five dash one zero uh, slash two oh two O V C dash oh thirteen dash ten.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, second by Commissioner Fields, that we open the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Ms. Frago, would you please present your case?
Um, thank you. Um, well, um, I moved to this house, uh, seven years ago. And I um, I inherit, I mean, I have the house with the detached garage. Uh, that detached garage have been an eyesore for me uh, for many years, but due to uh, economic reason, I haven't been able to to do anything until now that I would like to start a, build something there, and I decided to do a loft. A, in. Anyway, I, that's what I wanted. Um, and I would like for my representative, Mr. Winfrey, to speak more about it, if, if I may.
Okay, Ms. Frago, please state your first and last name and your current address. I don't believe I heard that.
Okay, Miriam Frago, seventeen oh nine Neely Avenue, East Point, Georgia, three zero three four four.
Thank you, and my apologies for pronouncing your name incorrectly. Okay, um, are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this case? Any other proponents?
Mr. Chair, I believe the uh, the applicant wanted her representative to continue speaking about it.
Right, and so he would be a proponent, and I'm waiting for Mr. Winfrey to speak up. You are a proponent, Mr. Winfrey.
Okay. Uh, yes, I was um, here to speak on her, uh, I'm sorry.
State your first and last name and your current address. Those are the rules of the public hearing before you start to present the case.
Richard Winfrey, uh, twenty-five ninety-nine Oak Street, East Point, Georgia, three zero three four four.
Okay, thank you. You can proceed.
Okay, um, I got involved in this project. Um, I was a former resident that lived one door from this particular structure. Um, and I met Miriam, uh, and discussed with her some of the options that she could uh, do with the structure, being that it was an eyesore, um, and it was something that she wanted to improve on. Uh, we began working on a plan, um, talking about the structure, the design, and what it would mean for the neighborhood to have that eyesore, um, remodeled and made into something decent. And so from there, we went through the entire process to get to this point. Um, I think we put together a, a very nice product that is consistent with the neighborhood. Um, and as far as the variance is concerned, we looked at every option based on the current structure, uh, which is a two-car uh, parking structure. Um, and the particular building being next to an alleyway, um, and bordering up to a topo issue on her property as well. Um, we put in, uh, it was best for us to put in for the variance for her, uh, to keep the structure, uh, as is and not uh, create a, 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 an issue further with trying to create a third parking structure.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
All right. Um, are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of the zoning case? Any other proponents here to speak in favor of the zoning case? Are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Any opponents here to speak against? Hearing none, seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Is there, is, okay, was that Commissioner Fan?
Lovett.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Lovett, second by Commissioner Fan, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Do you, I'm sorry, do you want just a recommendation or do you want the presentation, the information?
You present your recommendation with your presentation. The presentation. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Seventeen oh nine Neely Avenue, case number twenty twenty U as an umbrella, that's zero zero five dash one zero with a concurrent variance twenty twenty V C dash zero one three dash one zero. The applicant is Miriam Frago, who is also the owner. The property is located within Ward A, and she is requesting a special use permit to convert an existing detached garage into a habitable accessory structure with a concurrent variance for relief from required third unobstructed parking space. The applicant has provided a site plan showing where the primary structure, as well as the um, garage in question is located. As stated, the property is located within the R one A Urban Residential Zoning District and within the traditional urban neighborhood future land use designation. The applicant has provided photos of the property. As you can see, the garage is in a dilapidated state. This applicant has also provided photos of where the boundaries are, um, with the fence and a wall on the other side of the garage. As stated, um, per section ten dash two one three zero of the habitable accessory structure ordinance, the property must have a minimum of three unobstructed parking spaces, and that is what her concurrent variance request is for. Staff recommends approval for specialties permit to construct a habitable accessory structure as set forth in section ten dash two one three zero per applicant's request with the following condition. Site plan must be submitted showing location of third unobstructed parking space. Applicant must follow all criteria as set forth in section ten dash two one three zero of zoning ordinance. In the event location is being used as a short-term rental business, applicant must follow all short-term rental guidelines as adopted by city council, including registering home as such and applying for any business license. Staff recommends denial for concurrent variance for relief from third unobstructed parking space as set forth in section ten dash two one three zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, before I entertain a motion, um, on this from the commissioners, Mr. Austin, just for clarification, when you were asking about the presentation, were some of the visuals to be presented by the applicant, was that your question?
No. Um, no, don't worry.
Okay. Um, okay, commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that, um, we approve the variance based on the fact that, um, there's not enough to pot the, the pot, the pot, the topography won't allow, first of all, for another garage. And also that area has on-street parking as well.
So, Mr. Fields, hold on, let me, I gotta stop you for just one second. So that's going into the argument, we've got to get your motion in a second, and then we can come back and hear your reasoning and rationale. So your motion is to approve, is your motion to also approve the special use permit?
Yes.
Okay, so just so that I'm clear, Mr. Fields, your motion would be to approve the special use permit and to approve the request for the variance or relief from the third unobstructed parking space, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a second of that motion?
Mr. Chair, if I could just chime in to confirm that Mr. Fields's motion includes the conditions.
Thank you.
Well, the, oh.
And so those, those three conditions, Mr. Fields, that are on the screen, would be the site plan, um, showing the location of the third, okay? If your, if your motion is to approve relief from that, then the first condition would not apply. And, um, follow the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance. And so the first condition would not apply, so would your motion include conditions two and three?
Well, number three, I would, I would like to, uh, we, we haven't determined that she's gonna do a business with that at this point in time. That's something that seems futuristic and it's a conditional.
Right.
So dealing with that right now, I don't think would be proper. Um, that's something that she'd have to take up with the city if, if in fact, she's gonna do that.
So that is why the, I'm sorry, that is why the condition is stated in the event. So it doesn't mean that it is going to be a short-term rental, but in the event, it would, the condition is really saying that we need you to comply with the laws of the land. And if that's the law of the land, then you've got to register. So in the event.
In the event, yes, that the city council has passed and adopted that. Those ordinances based on, you know, the things that we've gone through in the past regarding that, yes, I would include that.
Okay, so let me just recap Mr. Fields's motion. Mr. Fields has made a motion to approve the special use permit um, and has also made a motion to approve the concurrent variance that allows relief from the third unobstructed parking space. And his uh, motion for the special use permit includes conditions two and three as stated by staff. Is that correct, Mr. Fields?
That's correct, yes.
For the record, thank you. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, that was Commissioner Fan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, any, no, Mr. Fields, this is your opportunity to go into your reasoning why.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I, um, from what I've seen of the neighborhood, um, that's, um, they have a lot of on-street parking as well. Uh, there, there doesn't appear to be many houses, um, constructed the way, um, Ms. Far- Ms. Frago's uh, property is constructed. Uh, she seems to be on a, a, a corner lot with access to an alleyway, which actually would have her ingress into the garage as people go around the corner there to, to get in there. Um, if necessary, perhaps she could park on the street because, uh, it seems that, uh, on-street parking is already allowed over there. Um, so if she has a two-car, um, access already there, possible once she do, do the build-out, um, then I think that would be sufficient. Um, so that's, that's my reasoning for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fields.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll go Commissioner Lovett, then Commissioner McKnight.
Okay. Um, my question is this, and it is to staff, and that is, does the city have a, an ordinance that guides on-street parking?
Yes, yes, it does, and it's based on the, the use of the property. Off-street parking requirements are based on the use of the property.
So what is it for residential?
For a single family, I believe there, it's, it's two off-street parking spaces. Um, and when you're adding this, uh, habitable accessory structure, they require you to provide a third off-street parking space.
So there is no allowable street parking, it's just happening, is that what I'm hearing? Or there is a certain number of cars that can be, that can park on a street, but it's just happening in the city without penalty, oh, obviously, and without penalty, oh. Tell me what, what, what that, what is rea- what is the, the regulations as we have them versus what is being allowed?
Um, Tony, are you able to pull up the parking requirements?
Yes, Sam.
Okay.
While, while they're looking for that, um, and then we're gonna go to you, Ms. McKnight. Uh, Ms. Wiggins, may I ask you to chime in on that? Would it be that on-street parking is allowed unless there's a sign, there's city signs posted otherwise that parking is not allowed or restricted or any of those things? Would that be, um, the case?
I'm, I'm just unaware as far as the city of East Point having parking regulations. There are some communities that provide for permits for you to park on the street. I haven't seen that, that process or program or policy be implemented in the city of East Point. I'm just unaware of that. I know there are many cities around, city of Atlanta, just many of them that have where you would go to the, um, police department who manages that process and, uh, obtain a neighborhood permit to park on street. Um, there's no such policy in the city of East Point that I'm aware of. Where you have to have a parking permit in order to park on the street.
Okay.
So an ordinance would govern that, what, um, what Kim is referring to, an ordinance would govern what streets would have certain parking regulations. So, um, for instance, I don't know how familiar you are with, uh, downtown Atlanta, like near Piedmont Park. It's a residential area that's kind of off of the park near Grady High School. Those areas are permit parking only, and so whether you're public, whether you're a resident, whoever you are, to park your car requires a permit. That's not the case, as Kim was saying, here in the city, there aren't ordinances that designate certain streets as being permitted parking or time-slotted parking. However, we do have zoning ordinances that say, based on the use of the structure, you must provide this number of parking spaces. And so for the residential, uh, R one, you must provide two parking spaces for a single-family home. So the persons that are parking on the street, um, maybe visitors, maybe, I mean, whoever they are, um, there's no, this is a double negative, there is no, no parking regulation that says they can't park there. But our zoning says that single-family homes must provide at least two parking spaces. And then the second level to that is that if you do have a habitable structure on your property, that structure must have at least one parking space.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Commissioner McKnight, and then it looks like Commissioner Bryant would like to say something, so Commissioner McKnight, if you would go. Commissioner McKnight, and then it looks like Commissioner Bryant would like to say something. So Commissioner McKnight, if you would go.
Yes, Ms. Wiggins kind of touched on my uh question, actually, is regarding the two parking spaces. So right now, the, the um, the property has the two parking spaces. With us taking out, um, number one, if you go back to the
Conditions?
Conditions. If you can go back to their screen for me. So with us taking out that first condition, the site plan must be submitted, submit a location of the third parking space. It's not necessary for us to, I, I just wanna know, is it necessary for us to include the two parking spaces? That was my original question, but it sounds like because it's already in the ordinance, requiring the two parking spaces, we don't have to do that. We don't have to add it again, right?
It's already a requirement.
Yeah, it's already a requirement. Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure of, is that at least those, that two parking spaces that's there remains. Um, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bryant, did you also want to say something?
My, my concern was the same concern that Commissioner Love it had, and uh I didn't know we, whether or not we had an ordinance in the city of East Point or not, and I had that same concern. So pretty much, uh, I, I, I heard the answer, and uh, so I guess we don't have an ordinance spotted parking, you know, in East Point.
All right.
Uh, but that was, that was, that, that was my question, though, uh, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fields?
Yes, I, um, I had done a Google on that particular location, and um it shows on the, on, on the address and the area around it, that there's street parking all over on Neely as well as down on Cheney. Um, so I was wondering, you know, maybe Ms. um, Ms. Frago and, or, or maybe her spokesperson could um elaborate on the parking situation in that area.
I can't.
Yeah, Mr. Fields. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Winfrey.
Yes, if you um, Cheney, her house borders Cheney and Neely Avenue. Um, the majority of the residents on both of those streets do park uh on that side, on her side of the street, do park on the street. Um, the original structures uh on those locations and many of the other locations in um historic uh East Point in that area had the alleyways where a lot of their parking structures uh were on the backside of the houses. Um, if you also look closely at, at Neely Avenue and Cheney, a lot of the houses don't have driveways or parking structures in the front, which is why the majority of people park on the street. With the abandonment of the alleyways in the back, which years ago was the original way that people came in to their house from the backside of the house, um, with a lot of those being abandoned and muddy, um, a lot of people do park on the street. Um, and to answer one of the other questions regarding the signs, uh, if you go up one street, one uh block up on Cheney, there are signs in certain locations that uh do not permit parking on one side of the street or the other. Um, I believe that was for narrower streets and streets that had higher traffic. So that is the way East Point, uh, from what I've seen, has uh helped with congestion on streets with on-street parking. Where, where it was needed, there are signs in certain locations that say you cannot park on one side or the other of the street.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to bring the board's attention to one other code section uh that has some applicability to this issue. Um, if the screen could be shared, uh, Tony, to section ten dash twenty-one fifty-nine point one. Subsection A talks about parking in single-family districts um and that parking or storage of vehicles shall be prohibited except on parking spaces as defined in Article A. Article A is the definition section. Um, off-site location of required parking spaces is prohibited. Um, and that, this is just so you can have all the information, not to sway the boards, vote any one particular way. Um, but the code is saying that um it's requiring certain parking, number of parking spaces in certain districts, and any parking outside of those parking spaces, uh, based on this subsection would be, would be prohibited. It goes on to say, um, garage and carport spaces may count toward the minimum required spaces in single-family districts. Um, anything over four vehicles that a single family is unlawful. Um, and so you can read subsection A, which just provides some more uh information for your decision-making.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments, questions, or concerns?
I have, I have one, one, one comment or question, and it may be for legal. If um these homes, a- as was stated by uh one of the commissioners, these homes, some of them don't have driveways, some of them don't have garages or walkways, and if those homes were in existence prior to those parking codes that were just pointed out by legal, that would mean that those properties are legal non-conforming uses. Is that correct?
That is correct. They would be, that's right. They would be grandfathered in, and if anything was done thereafter that took them out of grandfathering, they would have to conform to the current code.
Okay.
Uh, just one other um note, uh, that's in, that's not R one, that's the R one A district, from what I understand. From, from, it's R one A, which makes it F urban or something like that, right?
Urban residential.
Urban residential, so that's what this, this district is. So it's not a strictly uh residential district for one apart, you know, for one home. It's not a R one district, it's R one A district, and there must be some distinction um regarding those two uh zoning ordinances.
The zoning districts.
That's a district, yeah. So there must be some distinction there. One is urban, residential, and one is strictly residential, but she's living in a residential, uh, uh, I'm sorry, R one A, which is uh residential urban.
Urban residential, yes.
Maybe some, some different uh rules that might apply to that.
Okay. All right. Um, any other comments, questions, or concerns? There's a motion on the floor.
Is there, is there a difference? Is there a difference? Is there a difference? He raised the question, then, uh, nobody answered it, but is there a difference?
No, Tony did, Tony did respond, Commissioner Fan, and so, Tony, you can go ahead and say that.
I need here.
Okay, yes, you can go ahead and tell them that, what the distinctions are.
The distinctions, but then the single-family um dwellings as well as the multifamily is, is based on size. So some of the district, you have, you have R one, which is single-family, R one A, which is urban residential. Both are single-family dwellings, but they have different development standards, so lot sizes, um, that kind of thing. Same thing with the multifamily. You have R three, R four, and that is basically, they're both multifamily, but they allow for one, allows for higher density than the other. So we have different classifications of single-family homes, even though they're all single-family detached dwellings. They, they have different, um, the way the lot sizes are built out are different with each zoning district.
And, and also the other piece to that, uh, Commissioner Fan, um, that's why oftentimes we will get variances from um owners who live in R one A, the re- um, the urban residential, because they're trying to do stuff, you know, sometimes the, the driveways are narrower and they have those issues with parking. It, it's based on those lot sizes and not being able to have wider driveways and some of those things. So there are some restraints just based on the type that the houses were built, and then the lot sizes and some of those other things. And so that's what this, uh, Frago has come before, asking for relief um on that. Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
I do.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wiggins?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm just reading the, the code in one more section, and I do think that um, the planning and zoning department has already touched on this on their staff report, but there are conditions in the code in section ten dash twenty-one fifty-eight that must be met for there to be um an authorization of a reduction in the parking spaces. And so um I just wanted to bring the board's attention to that.
Okay, thank you.
That condition, Ms. Wiggins, the condition uh that complies with the condition one in terms of what uh was previously stated, that staff previously stated in terms of the parking, is that, is that concurrent with that, what you're saying legally?
Well, what I was saying is that the director of planning and zoning could have authorized a reduction in the number of parking spaces allowed on that lot, provided certain conditions were met. And because those conditions weren't met, this is while you're hearing it, because then that authority of the planning and zoning director uh was taken away because it didn't meet the conditions in the code. So the next level of um reprieve for the property owner is to come to this board and then on to city council.
I'm, I'm, I do understand that, but I'm just saying is, is that that condition that the, the staff has now said condition one, that condition is con- is concurred to what you just said in terms of staff has said, that they believe that uh you have to meet that site, uh, read that, that condition one again for me, please, Tony.
Yes. Site plan must be submitted showing location of third unobstructed parking space.
So that, that, that's, that's, that's what staff is recommending as a condition. Based on, I'm going with what you're saying, Sean, in terms of lot size and those other things, that's why staff is saying that it doesn't meet what needs to be met in terms of lot size. And I know we've done some with narrow driveways, I'm, I'm, I know that history that passed on that, so I, I see what, what you're saying on that. I understand. Thank you.
That is, that is absolutely correct. Uh, Commissioner Fan, we touched on it a little bit in the work session last week. Um, so staff legally, technically, has to deny because the law says that it should be there. So that's why staff put that condition in there, but then it's, so they, they, they have to make that recommendation. This body has the ability to grant the relief. Um, so that's why Ms. Frago has come to us, is to seek relief from that because of all of the other components, the lot size and all of those different things. And so, so staff wasn't able to administratively grant it. It had to come to us so that we could hear the case, and then we can make that decision based on those things and where it's located in R one A, urban residential, and all of those things. Okay, if there are no other comments, questions, or concerns, Tony, could you give me the agenda once again so that I can go ahead and bring this home? All right, there's a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Fields, seconded by Commissioner Fan, that this body um approves case number two zero two zero U as an umbrella dash zero zero five dash one zero with a concurrent variance. Let me see all of it.
Can you not see that?
I need the concurrent, it doesn't show the concurrent variance number. No, I'm trying to get all of everything. Okay, uh, yes, go back to where you were. I think that
Go back to the condition page, where we, yeah.
That, yeah.
Where we actually state what the, the recommendation is, the last, yes.
Right, okay. Um, and the concurrent variance, I don't see the number on there.
It's not on that one.
On the top.
Oh, it's not on there.
It's not on. Sorry.
Second. Okay, it looks like there, there it is. If you can just enlarge that a little bit. Um, there's a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Fields, seconded by, thank you, seconded by Commissioner Fan, that this body approves um special use permit two zero two zero U as an umbrella dash zero zero five dash one zero with a concurrent variance two zero two zero V as in Victor, C as in Charles, that's zero one three dash one zero, with the conditions as stated by staff, conditions number two and number three. Um, and to provide relief under the concurrent variance for the third parking space. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay?
Nay.
Okay. Any other nays? Hearing one, um, the ayes have it, the motion carries. So, Ms. Frago, the body has um approved your special use permit and your concurrent variance. It'll move forward to something else. Our next agenda item.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next agenda items, announcements? Is that it?
Um, Mr. Chair, I do have one announcement, and that is, as everyone knows, that the elections pass, have gone, and they have inaugurated everybody that, that won. But in twenty-one, uh, there are municipality elections, so for East Point, that means mayor and at-large council.
Okay.
With that in mind, all of you who are interested, I think the um qualifying date is August, and the election is in November.
Well, thank you. Staff, do you have any announcements?
Um, not at this time.
Okay. If there are no other announcements or nothing else good for the body, uh, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved by Commissioner Love it, seconded by Commissioner that this body adjourns, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the motion is adjourned. Um, before, the meeting is, before we do that, um, staff, please remember that according to uh the bylaws for this body, um, commissioning elections are always held at the February regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, so that rests me on the agenda for next month, all right?
We'll have that on the work session and on to the regular scheduled meeting for February.
All right, thank you. Everyone, have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, good night, thanks.